Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for all the many blessings that you give us, Lord. We pray for everyone in this room, Lord. We pray for our first responders. We pray for our military, Lord, and we pray for each council member as we conduct this business of the city of Bossier City. Lord, I pray that you will be with each and every one of us, and as we leave here, that you will protect us. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please call me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio, absent. Council, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record, and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion, with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council, shall be forthwith by the president pro tem, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor, except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, next, we've got ceremonial matters and recognition of guests. I know we've got three Bossier youth leadership. Will y'all just come up and just state your name and what school you go to? Come on up to the mic, please, if you will.
I'm Aleah, and I go to Parkway High School.
I'm Madeline Delon, and I go to Parkway as well.
My name is Samaya, and I go to Airline High School.
Well, we appreciate y'all coming today. Just maybe you can listen and hopefully learn something from us. Thank you. All right, council, do you have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Someone.
Second.
President.
Yes, sir.
Y'all voted in here already? Is that already gone through?
Yes, sir. They've made a motion in seconds.
We made a motion in seconds.
Okay, all right.
So you can, if you have comments.
Yeah, I'd like, well, you can go ahead and vote it in. I've got to comment afterwards. Well, go ahead. You don't matter. All right, well, first of all, I want to take the opportunity to thank the city council for working with me and my administration to provide meaningful raises for all city employees. For the last three and a half years, I've fought for raises for our most invaluable asset, and that is our people. Let me be, let me be clear. I fully support these raises. What I can't support is amendment to my budget that changes the funding source for these raises. A few months ago in September, I proposed a budget that funded raises for a stable and predictable source of funding that we know will have every year. This council voted to change the funding source and remove the guaranteed revenue stream, and choose to fund raises on projections of future tax collections alone. In my opinion, this is not responsible. And this much, and this is much more risky than my proposed budget. It could lead to problems in the future if the projections are wrong. Right now, the Louisiana Legislature is in a special session considering major changes to the tax structure, changes that could reduce the amounts collected by Bossier City. And this time, there are too many unknowns. When I ran for mayor, I said I'd run it, the city like a business. I'm using, and using one-time money rather than a stream of revenue that we know will have every year is not what a business would do. In business, raises would raise, would be based on a stable revenue stream, not paid from a savings account or put on a credit card. It's past time that we invest in the people who serve our citizens daily. And I fully support and agree with these much-needed and overdue raises. But I felt it was important to let you know that I do not agree with the change in the way the raises will be funded. Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve today's agenda. Any comments?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I absolutely support what the mayor's saying, but for a couple of other nuanced reasons. Number one, you have until December 20th to finish your budget. I believe that different guidance should be given to the mayor by the council that, that comes with more general guidelines, not a flat $500 increase. And I believe that what this council could do today, if you would change your agenda, you could vote unanimously to add an item to have discussion about what you think that would be fair pay raises and fair sources of revenue for this. You could just give general guidance and not give an amendment that drives the mayor to do something that the city could regret for the long run. I believe the goal should be to ensure that everybody in Bossier City is at the market minimum or higher. You can't tell, based on what you did last week, if you're going to bring everybody up to the market minimum. I don't think any thought was put into what was thrown out. It's like you were throwing mud on the table to see if it would stick. Hiring bonuses for jobs shortages in critical areas were never mentioned. That needs to be considered also, because you've got 20 policemen short in Bossier City, and that's dangerous for this city, because you already cut 10 positions, as I've mentioned other times. I believe the best thing that this council could do today, and I'll mention some other problems with what I see that's happening, that you've already given guidance for later on, but I believe this is haphazard. Amanda Nottingham, the mayor, and Ms. Williamson could go back and look at all of this and determine how much money is available. This should be a methodical approach, rather than just saying, everybody gets the same amount. You're giving pay raises in what you're doing to some people that are already being paid above the market range. You're giving the same pay raises to somebody who are making more than anybody in those seven cities that were studied. Did the council look at all those details? I mean, I hope that you would consider taking the time. You have until December 20th. This is not good government. That's why Bossier City needs to change. I think that change is in the, in the wind at Bossier City, and the city will be run differently. And, and I would also recommend, as one other option, Mayor, you have people in your city that would volunteer to come and help you work on this, to look at every person in the city to make sure that they're getting a fair wage. There's not a police chief or a fire chief, or a sewer or water person that's a leader that would not say, get my people who can't feed their families their pay raise first. But thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate your comments, Mayor.
Hi again. My name's Alice Boyer, 5041 Highway 80, Houghton, Louisiana. I, I first, as far as the agenda, of course, I want something added to the agenda, but, you know, the people have come here before and wanted things added to the agenda. And I, I see a difference. I just kind of want to bring up this disparity that exists, because I can see people that walk up here, and they're within the government structure, and if they need something added to the agenda, it gets added. But when it comes to the people coming up here and saying something about adding something, it is totally dismissed. I mean, Mr. Ray was well-received, and his agenda item was added. I was at a police jury meeting, and I mean, they were almost gleeful about adding an agenda item for Ms. Johnson with the chamber of conference. But we don't get that. Somehow, we don't get that response. And so it seems like there's disdain.
Ms. Boyer?
Yes.
Are you speaking on?
I want my item, I want an item added to the agenda since, you know, of the situation down there in Alexandria that AG Merle is having to address. I'm requesting the letter to Joe Biden concerning the United Nations be added to the agenda and discussed for the public.
Mr. President.
Please, point of order.
Ms. Boyer, hold on, hold on. Yes, Mr. President.
If I may, Ms. Boyer, the way that the public has an item put on the agenda is you contact, you contact your city councilman. Every resident of the city of Bossier has three city councilmen. You have the resident from your district, and you have two at-large city councilmen. If a member of the general public wishes, you know, to place an item on the agenda for discussion, then you go through your city councilman. You live in Houghton.
I, I am within the Metropolitan Planning Commission, Bossier City's district. Y'all have an effect on my district at some point in time in the future. I am within the planning commission, not, not a part.
The planning commission meeting. This is a Bossier City council meeting.
I just want something, this affects everybody in the community. This affects the city.
Ms. Boyer, let's not go there again. Let's not go there again, okay?
Why do you think this United Nations issue does not, the refugee issue, there was an illness down in Alexandria. Attorney General Merle is having to address it.
One time, okay, or two times before, and we're not going there again, okay?
I know. Why don't y'all want to talk about this?
Because that's not on our agenda today.
But you don't want to put it on the agenda.
Everybody hears the news. They know what's going on, so we don't need you to come and preach to us, okay?
I haven't seen it on the news.
So this is your last chance. I don't want to have to.
But nobody knows about the councilman's letter to Joe Biden, do they? Has anybody mentioned it to the news?
Are you done?
Not really. I want, I think that this needs to be addressed, about the United Nations and this program, that y'all are going to be sitting there looking at possibly getting money.
I'm going to ask you nicely to sit down.
I know. Y'all always want me to sit down.
Thank you. All right, we had a motion and a second, council. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th, 2024 Redler Meeting.
No move.
Second. Any comments or questions? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, public carrying, it's actions of unfinished business.
Adopting ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Hurag McElroy Investral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the city of Bossier City in Brookshire Grocery Arena. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
Comments, questions, council? Any comments from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to approve report of change order one for the airline drive rehabilitation project with an increase of $50,853.04 for a total contract price of $1,140,627.04. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
Any comments, questions, council? Comments from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to upgrade the vehicle detection system at the intersection of Stockwell Road and Shed Road, and Shed Road at Hickory Ridge Drive. Final reading.
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, any comments? Comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2025.
I'd like to make the motion that we combine items four through 28.
Second.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Any comments from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I'll make the same comment that I made last week, because it looks like you're going to approve the budget. Again, I look at the streets and drainage and see that you're taking a million dollars out of streets and drainage. If you left that in that budget and found other money from some of your other places that you keep money to, to take the million dollars that you take out, you could give every council district another $200,000 to fix streets and sidewalks in their district. Right now, Bossier City only gives $200,000 per district to do that kind of work unless some emergency comes up. So that's one item that I would say that when you combine it, that you, out of fairness to the public, you don't give us a chance to talk about each one of the items, and I wanted to make that comment, but thank you. I think that's a big sore thought for most people in Bossier City that have broken sidewalks.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, if it's not a him, just to be sure, my, the last time we met, we talked about the 133. Were you able to satisfy that through this budget?
About the, I'm sorry.
The number of those who fell through the cracks on the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure about that. Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
You need a motion to approve this.
I need a motion to adopt the 2025 operating and capital budgets.
I'll make the motion, we adopt the operating and capital budgets.
For 2025?
2025. Of course, through 28.
Mr. Free, second.
I do. Any comments, questions?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I can't tell by looking at the budget where the money's going, so I can't tell how much you've gone back to the salary study that was done by Bossier City that cost Bossier City citizens $70,000. But I wanted to raise some of the observations. A couple of things will be slightly redundant with what I just told you. The goal, using that study and for the pay raises, should be that you would ensure that everybody in Bossier City is at the market minimum or higher. No one has given anybody in Bossier City any sort of briefing to tell us that that's what you've done with what you're doing with the budget right now. Again, I think there ought to be some sort of pot of money for hiring bonuses for job shortages when something stays open for a certain period of time. That issue's never come up in discussion. The way that you're going through this process does not adequately address the sewer, the maintenance treatment disparity. You know, that's a critical area for the city, I believe, and those were some of the most underpaid positions. It does not address the police wage disparity in Bossier City, especially at the lower ranks. At the higher ranks, I think you're among the highest paid, but you're giving everybody the same pay raise. I think that's foul. Like I said earlier, some of the people who are at the highest paid in the city and above the market range, I'll be frank with you, shouldn't get a pay raise. You know, when I was a colonel in the Air Force for 10 years, I got very few cost of living, other than cost of living. I never got pay raises in subsistence or anything like that, but our younger airmen did. That's what you should be doing. Eighty-three of the areas listed in your salary study were below the market range, below the market minimum. Forty-eight were in the market range, and you have a certain number, mostly at the higher pay scale, that are above the market range. So should they be getting pay raises, or should you be directing that more towards the lower, or maybe giving bonuses? Somebody in Bossier City needs to look at every position in the city and do an adjustment where you have some sort of scale based on the number of years. And I know you do give pay raises according to the number of years. I'm sure you do. But some more thought needs to be put into this. You can't tell, based on looking at the budget, where the money's coming from exactly. You can only tell that right now, you've, I've, I've looked at where you've increased the salaries and stuff like that, but it doesn't give anybody any warm fuzzies in the city about what you're doing right now to address this. I think out of fairness to the people that are sitting in this room, you really need to vote this down and go back to the drawing board.
I'll say one thing, you know, not, not to you, but just overall. You know, we were sitting having our discussion two weeks ago, the, Daniel, the chief of police, and Brad, the chief of fire department, come up here and told us what they would like to do. We did that. So that should be, the fire, the police and fire should be fine, I would think. But that's what they wanted to do, and that's what we did.
I got one question, Ms. Nottingham. With the, the additional money that we approved for you, did that bring everybody in the salary study up to?
Yes, sir.
The salary study minimum?
Correct. There are.
So we have nobody that will be below that, correct?
With these increases, everybody will be at the market minimum or above.
Okay. And with the money that we, with the flexibility that we gave the two fire, the fire chief and the police chief, that is their flexibility to use that money as seen, and especially for the police department, where they don't have set pay increases like the fire department through the state that will allow them going from corporal to sergeant, sergeant, lieutenant, lieutenant to captain, and on up, to retain those individuals, because it does give a bigger pay raise along the way, correct?
Yes, and that was a recommendation from the study.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say to Ms. Nottingham and Ms. Williamson, Mayor Chandler, and Mr. Ray, thank you for obliging me with the meeting last week, because I was, had a lot of questions and concerns over this budget. I think one of the biggest takeaways that I walked away from is that moving forward into future years, that we, we have resources to get creative, to find reoccurring revenue streams. We, we talked at length about different ideas to generate revenues in other departments. And so I walked out of there feeling satisfied on the financial aspect of this budget. I, I don't like how we got to the final version of today, and I hope that in future years that we could do that a little differently. But I think that, and, and I have, I do have some concerns on the equitableness, if that's even a word. I don't know the right word, of, of, of it. But I think that it's a step in the right direction. We have first responders, we have municipal employees who are going to get significant pay increases than they've gotten in a long time from the city of Bossier. They've earned it. And, and like I said, we, we threw a bunch of ideas that we're going to work together, things that we couldn't just put together before today's meeting, but things that we can definitely address as we move into 2025 to make sure that this is financially sound for the foreseeable future. So, thank you.
Chris, the word sounded good, though.
It did sound good, right? Okay.
Counsel, any other comments?
No, just that I, I was at that meeting also, and I had, you know, I had my doubts too in resolutions, but I, I felt a whole lot better when, when I left the meeting. So.
Appreciate that.
I'll say, we're very lucky to have Ms. Williamson and Ms. Nottingham. They're very, more, way more smarter than I am.
That means, that means you're way, way, way more.
Way, way, way.
Phil, we've got a motion and a second.
Yes, sir. Motion by Mr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Williams.
Okay. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, new business.
Counsel, on behalf of the city employees, we thank them very, very much.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm 25.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the retirement to replace three gravity sewer manholes and an entire gravity main segment along Brew Street and O'Keefe Street that collapsed at a cost of $754,548.42. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second. Counsel, any comments or questions? Audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance creating and establishing the Bojor City Prosecutor's Pre-Child Diversion Program Special Revenue Fund and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Fisher?
Do I come up and just briefly explain that?
Mr. President, council members, Mr. Mayor, the, this is just an ordinance to establish the fund that we can deposit any monies into for a diversion program that Mr. Jacobson and I started earlier this year. Bojor City Court, or the prosecutor's office, if we call it, it's the only local prosecutor that we know of that didn't have some type of diversion program. We talked about establishing it. So far, we've only been using it for the, on I-20 in the construction zone, there's DOTD banned commercial traffic, 18-wheelers, and so we've been using it for the tickets that have been written, and they were, they're writing a ticket that frankly, I couldn't find where it's ever been written in Bojor City or Bojor Parish, so it's essentially a new ticket, and it's been, it's been very good, it's been a very good tool because it gives us a way to impose consequences and have these truck drivers have to have some educational component, but it also doesn't affect their commercial driver's license in other states, and we've yet, we implemented it in June, and we've yet to have a repeat offender. I know there's still trucks on I-20, but we haven't had one that has come through twice and gotten a second ticket, so at least the message is there, and they, they've been taking two-twenty, which is for safety. But we just needed to establish a, an account so that funds that are brought in by it can be put into it. So that's what this, that's what this, that's what these two proposed ordinances do. It establishes it for 2024. The 2025 was included in the budget that you adopted, so.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Ray? Thank you. Any questions from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance adopting detailed estimate and exhibition, exhibitions of the various item of receipts and expenditures of the diversion program fund for the city of Bojor City, Louisiana for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024, to serve as a budget of expenditures during the fiscal year and appropriating the amounts herein set forth as the budget of expenditures. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Counsel, any comments or questions? Any from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement granting a 10-year, $20 million ad valorem property tax exemption unto Louisiana Riverboat Gaming Company LLC. First reading?
So moved.
Second. David, I think you was going to expound on that a little bit.
I can. This is, Belive Casino is in the process, they're well along in the process, they're due to open early next year. Through efforts with the city, the mayor, and meeting with him, it's a $270 million project that they're investing in Bojor City and Bojor Parish. They requested because of the expenditure and the 700 employees they plan to hire. Out of that $270 million in infrastructure, they requested a $20 million exemption to last for 10 years, which is the maximum allowed by law. You know, and for economic development purposes, the school board, I believe, has approved it, police jury, and the sheriff are all on board. They're also in that joint cooperative endeavor agreement, so.
Okay.
And depending on what happens down there in the legislature with the tax reform is something that needs to be put in place before the end of the year, or we may or may not lose our ability to, to make economic incentives like of this kind.
Counsel, any questions? Questions, comments from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Public Works to fill a part-time laborer one position in the Streets and Drainage Division. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Who was that, give a second? Was that your duty?
Yeah.
Any comments, questions from the council? Any from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Reports, Ms. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Financial Report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended October 31st, 2024. Page one is revenue by fund. The city's currently 14% over budget. The majority of the decrease in hotel motel taxes revenue is due to the sales tax dedication check from the state received in October 2023 and was received in November 2024. The majority of the decrease in sales tax capital and parkway capital funds revenue is due to a decrease in sales tax revenue compared to October 2023. In addition, there was a transfer to the sales tax capital fund prior year when the 2015 LCDA bond fund was closed out. The majority of the decrease in water revenue is due to decrease in usage compared to October 2023. The majority of the increase in EMS fund revenue is due to an increase in EMS billing compared to October 2023. The majority of the decrease in sales tax fund revenue is due to 2.1 million in online collections for October that were delayed and received after month end. If these payments are included, the decrease is 339,002%. The majority of the decrease in Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund revenue is due to a decrease in unrealized gain compared to October 2023. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is currently 8% under budget. The majority of the increase in general fund expenditures is due to increases in salaries and Truport Transit Authority payments compared to October 2023. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is down 15.3% compared to October 2023. Approximately $951,000 is due to the delayed online payments. If these payments are included, there's an increase of $144,002.7%. Page four is the manning report. Full-time employees are three less than last month and are 50 under budget. Part-time employees are the same as last month and five under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for October 2024 has decreased 48% compared to prior year. Current year-to-date net income has decreased 15% from prior year and is 35% under budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, net operating income is down 9%. Are there any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Engineering Department, Monthly Project Report.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
Right in with us here. You'll notice this general overview has changed. There'll be a number of projects, we'll go over here shortly, but those are being pulled off the list, Carriageway most notably, so that overall and ongoing design and construction went from around, you know, 70 million down to a little more than 23 million. We've got $7 million in projects currently under construction, 13 projects in the design are bid phase, seven in construction, and then we have four subdivisions nearing the construction phase. We just talked about the Carriageway, it's complete. I'll be putting a slide on there in future presentations as it relates to Citizens Bank Drive, but this project is substantially complete. The security upgrades, that as well is complete. Just waited, they finally put the cameras in there today, so the idea being by next council meeting, we'll be able to use the main entrance to the facility. The marshal's office just want to make sure everything was done before we opened those doors. Airline drive overlay, that was actually complete today. Finally got the signals up, the old signals are down, they were doing some odds and ends out there, taking the cones up and things like that today, so this project will come off the list. Walbrook Park is very close. It shows here that the percent complete, percent time elapsed is based on the pay applications we receive, and I haven't gotten an updated pay application from them, but as you can tell, it's very close to being done. I suspect the next council meeting will be the last update on this particular project. Golden Meadows Turn Lane's another one that's close. Weather's not helping us there, but they're getting close to placing concrete there. We expect that to be nearing completion by the end of this month, hopefully. We're pressing to get that one off the docket. And these are, I don't have one in there for the preserve, it just started, but those are the four projects that are ongoing. We've moved some of these around, I can go through these briefly. Bardot and Montgomery Lane Drainage Improvements, we're working on Eastman Acquisition for that one still. Lateral B1, we're formalizing contracts, so that'll be a new project that we bring into this presentation. Citywide Street Improvement, that's out to bid right now. Same with Striping. Brownlee Road Rehab, that is, we're in, almost in the construction phase, we're formalizing contracts on that. Southbound Turn Lane there at China Berry, survey work is underway. We think that's a little further along than I'm projecting there. We expect that to probably go out to market in the first quarter of 2025. Carriagoecks Drainage Improvements, we have pricing on that, that'll be going out, that'll be under construction soon. Barkstill Air Force Base North Gate Improvements will be under construction soon. I'm trying to think of some of the others. Chiller Replacement Project is under construction, and then some of these others were still working on design, but be moving several projects into this report, and several are coming off, so, any questions?
Are you going to do the drone presentation for...
For the Carriageway?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
I was just curious about that.
One final, I want to make sure that they get some of the cleanup done and some of those punchless items complete before we do our final documentation of that.
Okay.
Hamilton Road's open now, so it's, if you've driven through there, it's pretty slick.
Any idea when they're going to hang lights on Swan Lake and 220?
Swan Lake and 220, the, the traffic signal there, I don't know.
Those are DOTD.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, you don't have a idea. And no help on Shed and 220?
On Shed and 220, I think we're 2027 probably before we get funding on that.
And then those will be roundabouts, not lights?
No, that's for lighting.
That's for, no, I'm talking about stoplights.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
No idea. That would be DOTD as well.
Got a lot of U-turns there as well.
Yeah.
Creating a lot of problems.
Yeah, and I think we, we reached out to the state on a couple of those and identified some issues that we have there, suggested some plausible options, but that hasn't gone very far.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey, Chiefs are gone. I just, no, you can stay there. I just want to thank you and thank Thomas Wagner for getting the old fire truck at the homecoming parade at Bojor. Man, the people still go crazy, you know, and Thomas had too much fun throwing all that, all throwing all my candy out, though. I know. Thank you, Thomas, appreciate it. Counsel, any other comments?
Yes. I do.
Go ahead.
So, I'm sure everybody in the room knows our listing, I can't go without defending the council and their budget that they proposed. The mayor made some mighty strong statements, as I would say, as to fundamental accounting and business principles which I vehemently disagree with. It would have been easy not to say a word, but too many of y'all count on this city council and have counted on this city council, certainly for the 23 and a half years I've served, and there's several other gentlemen, and I've spoken to Mr. Smith about this as well. This budget was not based on a credit card, it was not based on one-time money. A great deal of thought and business sense went into this decision. It's not, this council is not here to rubber stamp. This council's not here to take something that we might think might be better for the police, for the fire, for the municipal employees, and it is our prerogative. That is given to us by authority in our city charter that was voted on by the people in the 70s. The people of Bojor City, by the way, not those that don't live in the city. I want to make sure of that. So, yeah, you can laugh. No, sir, you do not have the floor. You do not have the floor.
Mr. Crockett, Mr. Crockett.
You do not have the floor.
You can have me thrown out, Mr. Mc, are you the president?
Mr. Crockett.
Listen. Williams, I have the floor.
Mr. President, are you going to control your councilman who's disparaging the public?
He has the right.
I spend every nickel in this city. Do you want me to go somewhere else? Do you want me to go somewhere else and spend my money? Have me, hold out.
Okay, where's the marshal at?
Your councilman was not on the agenda to speak and do that to me.
He has a right to speak at the end of the meeting.
He did not have the right to do that to me.
I'm not doing it to anybody, I'm speaking to those in the audience.
He's speaking to the whole public. Just, just ask him to go politely, if you don't, then...
And you should have been not so rude to her.
Who? Oh.
Mr. Montgomery, go ahead. What a jerk, man.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, let me finish that. We were granted the authority through the vote of the people, and every four years this council is elected, just as the mayor's elected. We have every right to amend the budget from the floor, it is well within our rights. Obviously, a majority, in this case, every councilman voted in favor of that budget, which went through the process, by the way, in an open meeting, discussed in front of the public, vetted, debated, comments from all of those in the audience that decided something was better. That's what this is all about. It's like the sausage making. Sometimes it's not pretty, but at the end of the day, look what we got. We got money for the fire and the police that they deserved, contrary to what was said. They got their pot of money, and they can do with it and apply it to those people that they feel as though are going to be most competitive in the marketplace. The fundamentals of recurring revenue, which has been a hot topic, our recurring revenue, for the record, is property tax, which is roughly 20%, sales tax is roughly 80%. for the record, is property tax, which is roughly 20%, sales tax is roughly 80%. Again, I will repeat this, for the past three years, we have consistently outperformed our estimates. Why in the world would we not go ahead and count that revenue now? We have increased the fund balance by over, I don't know, 30 million, something like that, 25 to 30 million dollars. My goodness, how much money do we have to sit on before we give it back to the people? Those people that are providing the services to the people of Bossier City. It was time, the amount was right, the money is there, and for those that say, no, the money's not there, or what are we going to do if it's not there, we have well over $4 million of a recurring, again, let's make it for the record, recurring revenue stream in our capital budget that we can transfer at any time in 2025 to supplement even a 0% increase in sales tax and property tax. I think that would, I would say that's pretty fundamentally sound and fiscal responsibility from a financial standpoint. So with that said, that this budget, number one, is fundamentally and fiscally sound from a recurring revenue standpoint. If in fact, in 2025, things don't go as we have, we have another 4.5 million sitting there, which we're going to use as capital, which has been brought up throughout these meetings, that we're not doing enough, so why not leave that money in capital so that we can do the necessary capital requirements throughout the year? And if, and again, I'm repeating myself, but for emphasis, the money is there, and this council has the power to transfer those funds back to the operating fund for fiscal responsibility. So let me assure each of y'all, and those out that are listening to this, and those that may watch in the letter today, this budget is fundamentally sound with recurring revenue currently, and quite frankly, going forward. Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Sorry. Next week is Thanksgiving week, and so we have, agenda items will be due on the 27th at noon, that's Wednesday, November 27th, at noon for the December 3rd agenda.
Mayor?
Yeah, and Thanksgiving is next week, guys, and I just want to say happy Thanksgiving, and I'm thankful for every employee of Bossier City. I appreciate y'all very much, and that's one thing I'm thankful for, I'm thankful for this working with this council that I do. A lot of times we don't agree, but if we agreed for everything, we wouldn't get things done. But I want to be thankful for that, y'all, y'all got next Thursday, next Friday off, so I want y'all to have a good time with your family and spend some time with all your families. I thank everyone of y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. Meeting adjourned.